Welcome everybody to the work session of the PCOSS and Planning Commission tonight, Monday, June 16th at 6:30 PM. Laura, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Arman Trout.
Present.
Mr. Peterson. Commissioner Peterson, absent. Commissioner Hirst.
Present.
Commissioner Hartley.
Present.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Present.
Vice Chair Guy Sanger.
Present.
Chairwoman Schott.
Present.
A quorum has been established.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a special guest tonight. We have Mayor Hux, who's going to be joining us to say a few words to the Planning Commission. And Mayor, we're grateful that you're here, and you have the floor.
Good evening to all. Thank you, Chairwoman Schott, and good evening, Chairwoman Schott, Vice Chair Guy Sanger, Commissioner Arman Trout, Commissioner Hartley, Commissioner Jaeger, Commissioner Hirst, Mr. Horton, Mr. Canelo, and Ms. News. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. I'm here on behalf of council to remind you all how much we appreciate what you all do for us and the time and effort that goes into it. In particular, as you know, with the two CUPs that we have currently in play, these situations have been particularly demanding. We appreciate you all accepting the CUP for the pickleball court being remanded back to you all. We wanted to demonstrate to all involved the extent to which we are willing to go to make the right decision and to never be in a hurry to make a mistake. I'm in my 14th year between the school board and the council, and the CUP for the pickleball court has undoubtedly been the hardest decision I've had to make, and I'm not there yet. And council members talk quite a bit individually amongst ourselves, and that's a common theme with this CUP amongst the council members. All gone back and forth, and we just weren't ready. We do appreciate you all's input and shared expertise. Evidence of the value that we place on you all as individuals and commissioners is the fact that the retreat that we're having this coming Saturday, we would not have done that without the support of the Planning Commission and direct involvement with the Planning Commission. Shared with Heather, the next step in the process that we intend to take, and this goes back to the vision and mission and vision statement that came out of the strategic planning retreat that we had on January 4th, is to pursue a comp plan adjustment to better suit the north side of Vicarville Boulevard. That's one of our objectives, and to initiate the planning stages for a community/recreation center, whatever it ends up being. But once we get past the retreat on Saturday, what we hope to do is provide clear, specific guidance for what we would like the Planning Commission to do for us, and we can turn that off, and we can work in parallel with the planning for the community center, and we're thinking separate the planning stages for the community center. I've talked a couple times lately, and Planning Commission involvement with that will be critical. Can't imagine doing it without representation from the Planning Commission. Something to think about and remember the value and the appreciation that we have for the Planning Commission. My presence tonight, of course, is certainly my pleasure. I first broached this subject with Heather several weeks ago, and we've talked a couple times about it since then. To determine a good opportunity for me to come, I'm glad it worked out tonight, especially with the retreat being on Saturday. Thank you. Have a lot of respect and admiration for you all. Is there any questions or anything else that I can share?
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that we appreciate your role as mayor and the work that you guys are doing as city council. I know that some of those decisions are tough, and I know you catch a lot of flack, and which really isn't deserved, in my opinion. I think too many people like to say too many things and aren't willing to get more involved themselves. So I appreciate you and the rest of the city council members and what you're doing, and very grateful to have you.
Thanks, sir. It's our pleasure. We do our duty, and as I was talking earlier, I've had so many role models in my life. I mean, I'm a product of the community, and so many of us are. I mean, the debt of gratitude that we owe to so many people is just immeasurable, and I'm so thankful to have the opportunity to pay it forward and do for others what others have done for me. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Hux. Thank you for coming out tonight. Next, we'll begin our work session, and Wiley, you have the floor.
Thank you. Take a moment to get my screen adjusted here. How do I get to this screen? Okay. Y'all will remember, well, the Planning Commission will remember that we went over conditional use permits a bit last month. I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to maybe go back a little bit and talk about the nature of conditional use permits, and also to go over some changes that came out from the last meeting. So I guess we're sort of going over to a certain extent what we went over last month, but with a few changes. Conditional use permits are permitted under Virginia Code 15.2-2286A3. Governing body is authorized to grant special exceptions under suitable regulations and safeguards. Special exceptions are also known as special use permits or conditional use permits. We use the term conditional use permits in PCOSS. Key principles to know about conditional use permits. And I'd love to take credit for this slide, but I will say it is from the Almoral Land Use Handbook. I did not cite that down here, but that's what it's from. CUPs are legislative in nature, as evidenced by the fact the Planning Commission and then the city council later makes the final decision. Planning Commission, of course, recommends action. Uses allowed by conditional use permit are considered to have a potentially greater impact than those allowed as a matter of right. I think we can see that when we talk about things like pickleball courts or indoor gun ranges or things of that nature. You know, it might be allowed, but there might have a few more conditions on them at the end of the day. CUPs must be evaluated under reasonable standards based on zoning principles. This is very important because really we're looking at the land use aspects of conditional use permits, not necessarily a financial impacts or impacts upon the property owner of having to go a certain way that might be more expensive. Impacts from CUPs are addressed through conditions, and that's something that we're all familiar with, making conditions. Conditions must be, excuse me, allergies. Conditions must be reasonably related to the impacts to be addressed, and the extent of the conditions must be roughly proportional to the impacts. That's sort of borrowing some language from some land use cases that have been through the Supreme Court in the last 50 years or so. Decisions by a governing body granting or denying conditional use permits are presumed correct and reviewed under fairly debatable standard. We always say in planning the presumption of validity, but that's... There are uses for which locality may not require a conditional use permit. I'm not going to go over all of those today. They're in your memo. I would just point out, one that we've had sort of recently has been group homes. We cannot require conditional use permits for group homes. And then I'm sort of back to where I was last month. As the Planning Commission is aware, there have been some rather detailed conditional use permits, particularly of late, and I think we all know what they are. The city council has expressed its desire to classify these applications so that all required information is provided well before a public hearing deadline for material submitted to the Planning Commission public hearing, which is no way of putting it. As such, you will note the language referring to officially submitted in Section 1-7B. This is, of course, in a proposed language. This includes classifying CUPs as major or minor. I did check in reference to a question from Planning Commission member, I believe Peterson, last month as to whether we were okay doing that. Essentially, we are. It's important classification from our standpoint, but it's really, I mean, a conditional use permit is a conditional use permit. Okay, so I'm skipping around a little bit, but this is the new language to be included at the end of Section 1-7A. Conditional use permits shall be considered as major as either minor or major, the difference being generally that a major conditional use permit involves a new principal commercial building to be constructed. I'm not sure how wedded I am to the term principal, but certainly we needed to differentiate that we were talking about a commercial building. I think Mr. Hirst brought that up at the last meeting. Requires the middle of a concept plan, including but not limited to all of the following: ingress and egress, property lines, building orientation and dimensions, inclusive of all phases, the parking lot, landscaping, and in general, at this point, location is form one of our best management practices. I had that in there. We had it in our application, but I went ahead and I put it under the actual language, too. Number three, require approval by the Architectural Review Board, ARB, for a new building or an exterior refurbishment of an existing building. And/or, and you'll notice "and/or" is at the end of each one of these because either any of these conditions can trigger, basically, for saying it's a major CUP. Traffic study required by Section 17C of this ordinance, that was something that we put in when we did the zoning changes back in November of last year. Unique impacts concerning noise, dust, and/or odor requiring certified professional assessment and/or environmental concerns as determined by the zoning administrator. Perfect example of that would be a noise study for gun range. The effects of this proposed change would be to separate CUPs as major or minor depending on requirements for the contemplated use. It would aid the applicant in knowing what is required of a particular proposal. Actually, that would be explained to them at a pre-application meeting, but they would have this reinforcement as well. Section 1-7B, subsection 1, this is where we got into what the city attorney wanted to have added into the language. Application for a conditional use permit as required by any provision of this ordinance shall be made to the city council and filed with the zoning administrator. The application shall not be deemed as officially submitted by the zoning administrator until all required information is provided by the deadlines established for submission of conditional use permits, which is generally 30 to 35 days prior to the next planning commission hearing. This is what's different. After the deadline is passed for the Planning Commission, additional or modified materials, and we've certainly seen a lot of that, shall not be allowed. Should additional or modified materials be submitted to city council after Planning Commission's made its recommendation, the application shall be remanded to the Planning Commission for recommendation prior to the additional or modified materials being considered by the city council. And that's basically to put it into what we've seen a lot, late submitals in adequate time and really review those materials and that sort of thing. Once deemed officially submitted and not before, the application shall be advertised for public hearing before the Planning Commission in the manner prescribed by the city. That's except for that first, that's existing language. Effect requires a complete application prior to be a T.O. in here, prior to advertisement for public hearings. Eliminates late submitals of materials without adequate time for review, and as a result of that, provides due process for all materials to be factored prior to a recommendation or decision. Okay, now we get back to the options from last month, and these are in the first part of 17A. Two options are presented, and they could probably be best seen when you look at the language that I gave the Planning Commission, current ordinance and proposed changes. You can see the two options at the very top. But I can give you a summary, is that option one basically leaves everything as it is now, which basically allows applications anywhere as long as the contemplated use is not explicitly forbidden in a particular zoning district. Further, CUP applications for non-commercialized properties can be anticipated. All uses, whether major or minor CUPs, would still be eligible for a conditional use permit application, again, anywhere, anytime. Certainly, this is the least restrictive option, and as I think I said last time, it's the only ordinance I've ever seen that really is this liberal on conditional use permits. We did take out the most restrictive due to concerns by the city attorney, but it does leave us with option two, which I think gives us a great opportunity to begin regulating CUPs in a more responsible manner. It would limit major CUPs to commercial districts, whereas minor CUPs could still be applied for anywhere, kind of the middle ground. Eliminates larger non-residential uses in residential areas in terms of scale and impacts. In other words, something like the gun range, not the pick on the gun range, but just the more recent one we've had, or the my storage building. Those would not be contemplated in residential areas. They would still be contemplated in commercial areas. This will allow for some commercial use in non-commercial districts, an example being the design business that Joey Hanbury has, which I believe came to this board about two or three years ago. Minor CUPs would still be eligible for a CUP application in residential districts. So really, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to put the minor CUPs, they're okay anywhere, but the major CUPs would only be allowable in commercial districts. So that's basically the two options. Everything else, you know, was last month with a few embellishments and corrections made pursuant to comments made by the Planning Commission. And I'll be happy to take any questions you have. And again, this is just for an initiation, so.
Seems like the distinction between major and minor has significant implications, so I think the definition would need to be clear. What happens if there's a situation in a gray area where it isn't crystal clear? Who makes the ultimate determination on that?
Well, that would be the zoning administrator would make the... Again, these are general criteria, but the zoning administrator does have that discretion.
So if they submit their paperwork and they're late or want to add something, again... through the planning commission?
Well, the planning commission needs to be able to factor that information in, so if that lays them to that point, yes.
I have a question or at least a comment.
Sure.
The term officially submitted has been used, and it's my understanding that all of those required documents or information for the application would be presented or official at that time, if you will.
They would be received, yes, as part of the application.
Okay, and then at some point, once everything's been checked off, then it will be brought to the planning commission?
That's correct.
Okay. So then I guess that the hope is, the desire is, that information that comes late will be much, the chance of that is reduced because all the necessary information has been thoroughly reviewed.
Right. It's been greatly reduced, yes.
Yes, checked off, and which I think is great, is a really good idea.
And for some members who were present, we had an application who submitted a key piece of information right before a planning commission meeting, and that's really, one, not fair to planning commission, it's not fair to the public, who has a right to be able to view this information?
Well, it's due process.
And it's due process, correct. And so what this is doing is, it's sort of option two, is the best of both worlds, where you still have your property rights, you can still do these minor CUPs, you can still do major CUPs. Obviously, don't want a major CUP in a residential area, and it puts the burden on the applicant to make sure they get their paperwork here in a timely, accurate manner so that you're not bottlenecked in making these decisions, like, oh, well, we need this piece of information before we can approve X. And so it really is streamlining the process more efficiently.
And the burden for imparting that will, of course, be on staff.
That's correct, true, and staff's going to vet that information.
Correct.
Right. It's very, very good work, Wally.
Thank you.
Wally, can I clarify? So this subtle information will be vetted by staff prior to make sure, like, the landscape plan and the parking is correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. That is our responsibility.
Okay.
What you're looking for tonight from us is a consistent idea of which option we would like to proceed to go forward with at a future meeting. That's what you're looking for from us tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
And along with the other material, obviously, but yeah.
Right.
I have a thought that I'd like to share, and I'm not exactly sure how strongly I feel about this, but the requirements seem fairly comprehensive, and in a way, that's good because it does minimize the consolidation, or it consolidates the information that gets submitted so that we can review it as a whole, but I wonder if it also puts an undue burden on an applicant to put together a whole bunch of information, incur a bunch of cost for something that may not be able to move forward anyway. So would that prohibit someone from even applying for something that might be beneficial because of the cost of putting this big package submitted together on something that they aren't sure they can get approved anyway?
I think that's when staff would partner with them and work with them and explain the process and really advise them, because, you know, our staff here does a great job at really working with the applicants and, you know, telling them what they need and what would work best. And so while I understand 100% what you're saying, we don't want to put an undue burden on anyone, I do think that with staff partnering with them as well as the applicant wanting to establish business or something to that effect here, we have one application right now that city council can't vote on because they don't have all the information. So it just keeps that moving forward. I think if you're going to bring a business forward, you know that you're going to, you know, incur some type of cost.
I believe that's true. I mean, take a look at My Storage, which was, it's been almost two years in the review now, kind of hard to believe, but they needed to go through ARB, and they needed to get that. They had a concept plan. It wasn't a full-blown site plan. That's not what we're asking for, not in full-blown, which, you know, that does cost a lot of money, but a concept and general location of your BNP's, that may change, but, you know, just a kind of general idea of how it's going to be laid out. I don't think that's asking too much, and really, anybody who's serious about commercial development is going to know that those things are required anyway.
So it's no commercial development in residential areas, is really?
There'll be some commercial development, but there won't be any commercial development where you'd have to, big commercial building, or, you know, ARB, or you need traffic studies or any of that sort of thing.
I mean, like the old restaurant down there.
The old crab cake house.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's no parking, there's no, so it's kind of a limit.
That's the example that I wanted to give. You know, if somebody wanted to come back and open up a restaurant back there, probably appropriate. If someone wanted to tear it down and put a 7-Eleven on that corner, probably not appropriate. So, you know, they would still, that's the situation where, okay, a restaurant or a minor use, that's, we can consider those things, even if it's major, okay, we'll consider it as a CUP, but, you know, this kind of just gives us a line to start with in these applications. You know, we have those outlier commercial buildings in residential districts that have been used as commercial structures for decades, and it's not the purpose of either of these options to make that unavailable. But, you know, what I think we're trying to, you know, get away from is CUPs that are either submitted, I'll say, half-hearted in that you don't have enough information to make a recommendation, but right now, they can basically come to our office with the one-page application filled out with a check and say, I want to apply.
Oh, yeah.
And we really don't have a choice but not to take it.
I agree.
You know, where, you know, in this case, it's kind of, it kind of gets us towards almost our site plan process. No, no, no. The code says you have to do these things and provide these things before we take this application as officially submitted. Then, once you do that, we'll spend the $500, $600, $700, $800 to legally advertise your public hearing, then we'll take you to the planning commission, you know, for recommendation.
And at the end of the day, you'll know what you're supposed to do once you get a pass.
You put a booth through in that place, anyway. They don't have a whole lot of room down there, so.
That would definitely require a traffic impact.
Exactly. But Thomas makes a good point. I mean, one of the things about these minors, you know, we're not trying to put these people out of business. In fact, our, you know, we always kid amongst ourselves, you know, we try to find a way to get to yes, and that's what this is about, but doing it in a more responsible manner and not putting excessive burden on the planning commission or city council.
And just if I can add one thing, there's always another option, you know? That option is what Mr. Harbin just did with his property on West Creek Road, conditional rezoning. So if a conditional use permit isn't necessarily appropriate, or if we're, we, the zoning administrator designees, or the zoning administrator who, right now, is the city manager, if it's in that gray area that may exist between minor and major, okay, are they even eligible to apply? Anyone can apply for conditional rezoning, basically, for anything, anywhere. So there's still, I'll say, an out for folks who may fall in this limbo area that will inevitably, it'll always exist, but we will always offer a way for someone to come to the planning commission and to city council to do what they want to do to at least have it considered. So that's option three, that's just not covered in this part of the code.
No, it's not covered in this part of the code, but, you know, even if you get a rezoning application, the theoretical rezoning application, you're probably going to want some of the same material, yeah, at least generally. But anyway, more on that later.
Thomas, the fees for the permit applications, are you thinking to, you make the fee appropriate with a minor, a major? A major, you know, the major would, you chart for of an application fee because it's going to involve more effort?
Well, the application fee, more or less, the purpose of is just to cover our costs to legally advertise in the newspaper. The state code still requires us to legally advertise in a newspaper of general circulation, which we have one, and it's owned by a company in Chicago, and I could tell you that a one paragraph, the planning commission's having the public hearing, here's the one item that's on, is about 500 bucks. When we have three or four public hearings, most times, we don't even cover the cost of advertisement with our fee. So the fee is really just to cover that cost of advertising, because ultimately, it's thoughts on all of our taxpayers, and that application fee, and that's what we tell applicants all the time, why is this so expensive? Because we have to, per the state, legally advertise, so that that cost isn't necessarily proportional to the scope of the application. It's purely related to the cost, and it increases every July 1st with the Consumer Price Index, but sometimes covers our costs, sometimes doesn't, but we, the city council, you all, can manipulate the application fee or cost, but, you know, it's not to prevent someone, of course, from applying. We wouldn't want the cost of it to, you know, basically make it cost prohibitive for someone to make application. So I think how it's structured now achieves that, and
Yeah, I think so.
Almost covers our costs in most circumstances.
And just to be complete, it will go up 3% beginning this July 1st. It's $711 now, but it'll go up 3% from there. And I know it will, because Lars is on top of.
I'd like to bring up another, similar to what Commissioner Hirsch mentioned, but a little bit different. When looking back to the gun range that we worked, have worked on, indoor gun range here, to me, that falls under the major category relatively
It would, yes.
Easy to determine that by looking at the five criteria here, but when I switch over to the pickleball CUP, I go down to number five, and it says, unique impacts concerning noise. So with that, because it does, that nature of that sport and has been a big topic with that CUP, would that trigger a major?
It would not trigger a major. It would still be a minor. There are some concerns about in the ways of pickleball courts, but we did not require a sound study as part of that application. And, you know, really, we've had, frankly, some highly contradictory information given to us by both sides. So, you know, that's one we just have to kind of sift through and sort.
I would think the traffic impacts, and, you know, if you have an actual business going on and you're renting that versus what they're trying to do it for, which is just family or friends, there's the difference, major, minor, impact, to me. That's just my thought process.
Right. I think we would agree with that thought process.
Thank you. So do I hear, do I have anybody that would like to give their thoughts on what option we should go with? I mean, I have my own viewpoint, but I'd like for...
It seems like we're honing in on, is it option, option two, right?
Right.
With just the idea that we would have more complete application, less time getting last-minute information, and kind of spinning our wheels and having to send things back and forth between city council and planning commission?
Right.
That would be my thought.
Right.
I do believe all of this is a major step in the right direction, because it's like, we just start from scratch every time. You know, you hear people make comments about, oh, it wasn't zoned for that, it wasn't, well, that's not true, because we have such relaxed laws here in town, which are great in a lot of ways, but, you know, we need some kind of structure, you know, we want to be fair, but, I mean, I think we're getting there with that, so, I mean, this is really good. I mean, both options are...
Hey, I would argue that even this language is really liberal.
Right, it is, it's still very...
Well, I've experienced York County's special use permit process from an applicant end, and it's grueling. A major project, and so, you know, if a project does require, you know, after going through, you know, there's needed, and you need to take a hard look at all the various things that impact the site and the community. I'm glad to see this. So, you know, I am in favor of that part, anyway, to have a major conditional use permit.
I think it's good. I think that certainly necessarily we kind of tighten the strings a bit, liberals, it has been, it just, it makes sense.
Sure.
Kind of asking people to commit, for the most part, and to kind of, you know, do diligence before they're applying for something, so that not such a burden on staff as well, as well as us kind of running back and forth, so makes sense.
I'm all for this, the process of making things clear for all involved, the applicant, the planning commission, the zoning staff. I think it's great. Ultimately, I think the decision is, rests on, well, the determining factor for me is what, which option will allow, is best for the applicant and for us to make the best decision. And I think ultimately, that's what we're here for, is to make the best decision for the city, the residents, the community, so, and I think this is a move in the right direction to enhance that. As far as which option is the best, I'm still following through that, but I do see a lot of value in option two, for sure.
I agree. I think option two is the best of both worlds. It provides teeth for this process as well as, like, you know, Thomas, you explained with the advertising cost, if you're serious about doing it and you want to, you know, open a business, and it doesn't, you know, backlog the process of being able to make those decisions to move forward to get these businesses up and running. And so I like option number two, I just think it makes sense where it gives some guidance, but it doesn't preclude anybody from major or minor, and so I do like that, that option. So do you have what you need?
So what I'm getting from the planning commission, I can just get an acclamation, is that we're going to go with option two, and I'm going to present this language as presented tonight at the public hearing next month.
Good with everyone?
I'd like to see some, maybe a little more thought put into the language around defining what constitutes major versus minor, just so we make that as clear as we possibly can. And I don't have any specific suggestions off the top of my head, but I think there's still some gray area there that...
Well, I'm not going to dispute it, and it might be some gray area, because... Well, I'm not going to dispute that there might be some gray area, because one thing in this business, we know is that no two days are alike, and you haven't seen it all until you've seen it all. But I would say that if there is a question, we do have a mechanism in place with the zoning administrators, final decision, so.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you all.
That is actually it for our agenda tonight. I know that some people have said that they cannot be present, but on Saturday, there is a joint work session with city council and the Economic Development Authority, and Mr. Neil Morgan, county administrator from York County, will be doing the retreats. So that's an exciting step in the right direction to get all councils together, and that's at 9:00 a.m. So if you can be present, it's a public safety building, I'd encourage you to be there. Have any other comments? All right, well, with that, we stand adjourned.